Second.
I'll second it.
Motion been made in second and Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries, claims and payroll. Any questions Courtney?
I'll make a motion to approve claims and payroll, second.
Second, Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Reports, manner, I talked to see this more.
Kim sir.
Kim sir, okay, perfect. I talked to Julie last Monday and she had told me that she was gonna be at her daughter's basketball game tonight. And I told her family come first and she was with the mix-up last month, or possible mix-up. But anyway, she just wanted to make sure it was okay that you come present about her contract. And any questions that council may have for you? The floor is yours.
Okay. Well, it's just a contract here. Basically, all I'm here for is just to say make sure.
Okay. We got a left hand.
They have to go through a little book.
Well, no, I mean, they have to just make the motion in second.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion.
But any questions they had over the report, if you could answer them, if they had any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I'll make a motion to approve Julie's contract.
I'll second.
Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Okay. Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you have a good turnout at your shindig last Monday?
Yes, we did, we had a great turnout.
Good.
It was good, pretty cool.
Glad to hear it.
Good food as always.
Perfect. Okay. Police Department Officer Wells. Chief Yostin was gone on a pre-scheduled vacation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've got right here. These are a quote from Laser Technology is the company. That's the, we spoke in the September meeting about a LiDAR unit. It's a little bit confusing. You can see the first line item, three of one, four, six, five, five, is actually a deduction. They're running a sale, if you see under the special instructions, they're running a sale on the True Vision until the end of the year. It's actually, they're 2,000 off. So, other than that, the ultralight, the 33.95, that one actually isn't going to be available. They said at very, very minimum, six months. She said expect, they're hoping for 2020 release. They did away with the old model and now the LTI2 ultralight, so they're no longer selling those ones.
And just to refresh, the citizens present that may or may not have been here, watch the video explain to them what a LiDAR is, or what the advantages over the regular radar is.
Radar is what we currently use in our patrol vehicles. Basically, bounces back, the radar comes back, that's how you calculate how fast someone's going. LiDAR would be the handheld version, only it's laser instead of using actual like.
Sound waves.
Sound waves, it uses a laser.
And then the other.
It's a handheld unit, it would be beneficial to our department that way. I mean, as some people have stated, we can be a little more sneaky, you know? And instead of being out there with our patrol vehicle to run speed, we can run speed just by standing on a street corner. So, I feel that it'd be beneficial to our department, we could put it to good use, especially on some of our problem streets in town. Mainly residential, this, you know, also could be used, you know, utilized out at Fire Hall or East End for, you know, our speed traps on either end of town.
Yeah, don't blind anybody with it.
No, no, it's invisible to the naked eye. The laser itself is, so.
Are they expensive?
Yes.
Yes.
We're talking 3,400 and then the True Vision is a $7,000 unit. And then they're running a 2,000 off special till the end of the year.
Yeah, after conversation with Tyler and with Courtney this afternoon, I recommend as administrator, the version that's 7,000 with the 2,000 off, it is a better product as well as the warranty is much better. It's more bang for the buck and there's no doubt that they need it and so that's my recommendation.
And it's just the one, right, that everybody will be trained and then share?
Correct.
There's not one for each unit?
No, no. No, this is something that can pass off between shifts, you know?
Right.
One unit per agency is.
More than, yeah.
I will say the True Vision, while it's quite a bit more money, offers quite a bit more too. It has its own internal memory bank, it does video recording and everything. So, I mean, it captures it all right there, it presents a nice case for court.
You need a motion or what?
Yes.
Hey, 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 hey.
Open question.
So, the money collected from speeding tickets could help pay for this?
Well, speeding tickets go through county court and majority of fines through county court go towards schools, to be completely honest with you. It's not something that we'd be issuing city level violations.
Thank you, Mr. Eppsaw. Well. Right, more tickets.
I think you get 25 percent if I remember right. You should get 25 percent.
And I honestly, I wouldn't want to quote another because I.
Fortunately, we got a budget for this kind of stuff, so we.
Yeah, no, there's no, I wouldn't have made the recommendation without knowing that our process that we have with anything that's needed in the police department for either whether it be bulletproof vests, whether it be uniforms, whether it be we have this, so this is perfectly taken care of, so.
With or without the extra funding.
I don't have a problem with it, but you need to make sure it's utilized.
Make the motion to purchase the True Vision kit for the police department.
So, are you gonna ask for an evaluation, like, six months after they get, see how it's working and if it's effective?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And then just to make sure the training is included in the purchase price, right?
The training would actually be through.
Through.
I need to confirm this, but I believe I am already LiDAR certified from.
When you went through the academy.
The academy in 2012.
Gotcha.
When Officer Newman, Chief Yostin went through, LiDAR wasn't even a thing, so they wouldn't be LiDAR certified. It's just, it's a short course, you take a little test out.
Gotcha.
So, they're pretty easy to use, Rick, honestly.
Are we gonna give them so much time to get.
Certified, yes.
Certified for that, within three months, within six months?
What would you feel would be appropriate?
It's gonna take him six months to get this.
Without, without calling NLET C in Grand Island, I don't know if they offer a course for it or if we could utilize like Trooper Paterna.
Sure.
He carries State Patrol LiDAR, I believe, most of the time. And I believe he can actually train.
Okay.
I'd have to confirm that.
Will you check with him?
Absolutely, yep.
I'm good with this as long as the training is done prior to us receiving it.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? A motion by Tyler and a second and by Julie, Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other questions?
How much was that for?
Seven, or.
Want a copy of this?
Yeah.
It'd be 49.95.
Yeah. We're saving 2,000.
49,000.
4,900, yeah. There's $2,000 off before the end of the year, so.
And I did actually pick up this unit when I was down at conference, I did go through it. You know, the, the sales rep was being a sales rep, you know, it, it truly does offer a lot more than the ultralight does.
Any questions on the monthly report? You can have mine otherwise.
The motor vehicle theft, Tyler, what was that about?
You can have mine.
That wasn't my case. I was looking at that one too because that's something that we, you know, don't have commonly.
Is that the one that started and ran off and ended up in O'Neill, or is that a different?
No, that, I believe that one was a different one. This one I was, I am thinking is the one that started out on the east end of our town.
Yeah, and ended up at another establishment downtown.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, 'cause that would have been two months ago.
Yes.
Did anything come of that, or was it just?
Yeah, he was jailed.
Any other questions?
Other than that, any others?
Tyler?
One more question.
Sure.
Three dog at large, was that different dogs? You know, write-off?
Write-off hand, I do not know. I believe one of those would have been one of mine that was taken to Pierce, to the vet clinic, impounded down there. Have to look back and figure out for sure if one or two, or how many, how that broke down, but.
Downstairs.
I don't know Courtney, have you gotten a bill from Pierce then?
We had two that got boarded, so.
In November?
Yeah.
Okay, so two of those three were taken to Pierce Vet Clinic.
Any other questions? All right, just stay. Unfortunately, with your meeting that you had, your conference in Kearney and then our meeting got postponed and stuff, so four times I had the opportunity, but it didn't work out. And I know you were only doing your job, but in the early morning hours, a few months back in August, you helped pull a lady from an actual fully involved house fire. And I would like to honor you with a plaque for doing your job.
I appreciate it.
It's all backward, but you get a little red and white pen to put on your uniform. And then the red, just so you know, the red goes to the right side and the white goes to your left side, so you won't have it on upside down. All right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, economic development report.
First thing on here is always that community building. I don't know if Mike and Mark, who did it out, that was what you guys requested at the last meeting.
No, absolutely not, not yet, this time of year, on the bidding for the community center, so. Probably first of the year, we'll get the bids out to the different areas.
Sure.
We have an update on the Nebraska Housing Trust Fund, this is that half a million dollar disaster relief grant that we were awarded. There is a three-month delay now on getting applications out to disaster-affected residents, which is not ideal, but the state has held us up. They haven't approved the guidelines, they haven't released the funding. It's causing some issues, so we're looking at not being able to help people probably in this town, which is unfortunate because we're hoping to get a lot of facilities things done by Christmas. On the RBDG loan, we did close on December 2nd for actually, they didn't have a public family pharmacy. And then we held our RBDG cutting for them on the 5th. I think it was really well attended chamber. And I want to thank Bruce and Courtney, they had to do some extra work to get our RBDG attorney opinions and quite a bit of paperwork. I think that application, when it was done, was 85 pages. It was not a light task and I do appreciate their help in that. On the downtown revitalization issue, it's on the agenda for later, but that's just the service contract that we'll have to do if needed. I want to be clear, I've had some questions from some business owners about this. We were awarded the $50,000 planning grant, of that is 43,000, we have that match that's coming from LB840. This is the planning grant only. What this does, it allows us to go and get a firm from Kearney, well, not Kearney, somewhere across the state, to come in and start working with our business owners to develop a plan for each building. All of the interior and exterior issues, outside facades, outside renderings, creates a look for downtown. And then it helps us also long-term develop a strategic plan for downtown revitalization. So, that's step one in a DCR process, that will run from January to August. And then in August, we'll turn around and we apply for that $450,000 grant where we can actually do the projects. That's the one where the business owners will be able to access the funding, where we will have an application, they can fill that out. Our CDA committee needs to be appointed tonight by Brian to be our DCR committee, but they're the group that is gonna go through all those applications and award those projects once we receive that larger funding. So, I think a lot of people thought that this first part was they were gonna have access to, and it's like the planning grant only, so. Hometown holidays events, I think, did great, I want to thank Courtney for all her help, I mean, she was spearheading a lot of that. And I think we had a lot of events, we had a lot of nice things going on in this town. Not a lot of participation this year, which is a little sad, but maybe next year it'll catch on. I want to thank all the businesses though that participated in the window decorating, the planters, the ducks and the gift baskets, which I think has been a lot of fun. And then all the other events that we had for Saturday and Monday. Do really good on those. Pierce County website is free for complete, we hope to have the site up here in the next two weeks. Once we get that up, it will be a resource for our community. Anybody looking to move into the county is gonna be able to click on the Plainview tab and see all of our housing for sale, our open buildings, information about our schools, a link to our website, all of the information that you would need to either move into this county or start this this year.
Tyler's up.
It's my business person, he wants to move here from Workhorse. Call him later. He'll be our second RBDG in the next 30 days. On the IRP program, I, Mike Holton, Bruce Curtis and I met with our local and state reps on November 18th in Plainview to kind of discuss the closing documents and how that's gonna work. So, we've kind of targeted the end of December to have all of this done and have a closing date. So, it's gonna be all hands on deck for the next couple of weeks, I need another attorney's opinion from Bruce. Courtney's had to do some things with the new accounts, so we're working on getting that done. Hopefully, we can have that in place by the end of January, so we can start, our business owners can start accessing some funding. And I have two already that are interested in doing it, so. Kind of, and also, the University of Nebraska Extension Office, it's Chris Penn's workshop, where I also have an office, is hiring for a new community vitality rep. The one that we had before, his name was Justin Arnold, and I think maybe some of you met him, he was here a few times. He worked in the space of workforce development and talent contraction. So, they're finally rehiring for his position, they have found a candidate who is someone from the Center for Rural Affairs. They've invited me in to do that interview with them on Thursday, since we'll be kind of working together. So, I'm kind of excited about having some help in the county with all of this.
I wondered what happened, I haven't seen him for a while, heard his name for a while.
He took a fabulous job in South Carolina, he every now and then sends me pictures of the beach and talks about how great his job is.
Good for him.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I think so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
City Superintendent, Mr. Hart.
Yeah. Just got a couple things, I had sanitary survey done in October. Basically, a section of the water system. Got efficiency on Rich, the field reps doesn't think I have adequate time to take care of the system. So, he's recommending, well, we have to have a backup operator anyway, so we don't have one, so. We will be advertising probably for some kind of help, so. I know Troy has, I don't know if he's here or not.
He's bad for him.
He's, might step up, take the test, see if he can get his license back, so that'll help out, so. Discharge for me, I know we talked about that a couple months ago. We kind of put the kibosh to that. They, he is really killing us on parameters, so. We sent it back to Lincoln and J.O.'s working on it, so. That's all I can say on that. Other than that, still working on equipment and get things done.
I had a couple citizens ask, I mean, I should have maybe asked in private, I don't know, but if there's a, if we, you have a policy or anything about putting gravel, more than one citizen, but one was Pond Street and that one block north of the highway, and then the rest was like from the school bus shed to the the four blocks that got flooded, like if we have a policy to put gravel down and grade it more.
We won't put gravel down this area.
Right.
If we don't get it to plow, I would just push it.
Right.
Hopefully, it's not city calling.
It's restrictive.
I kind of thought that, you know, with the, like, with the power, but I didn't know in the spring or fall, what time's the best time to put gravel down?
There's a couple things to mind that, you know, backing up Kurt, is that when you have these gravel streets, there's two things that have happened. One is the base has not, most of these gravel streets, the base has not completely come back from the March flooding.
Right.
And second of all, the particular snow we had, had a lot of under slush, so it never had a chance. So, when they go, contrary to popular belief, no, we didn't just pick on gravel streets and not do it. We couldn't get there and they did the best they could, I thought they did a great job. But those gravel streets are gonna be a pain no matter what.
Right.
If it doesn't freeze, we won't plow gravel streets, so. We've had a few complaints, but.
No, they just asked me if.
Hey.
Cost mine.
Even all.
Did you have a good week off with your family?
Yeah.
Good.
Wasn't long enough though.
It never is, right? Rejuvenate and recharge a little bit. I better let you check your messages, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Holton?
I'll wait till later, but I would like to just make the comment on hometown holidays. I thought the businesses and those involved, including Courtney and Susan, took it upon themselves with the chamber and others to put together a hometown holidays that I thought was very, very nice. I have not seen it in this town that complete for many, many years, and I thought it's been a while since I've seen the festivities. It's too bad that on Monday, it got a little chilly, but you know, it didn't dampen the enthusiasm. And I would encourage, even though the participation was a little low, that continue to do things like that, 'cause that's how you're gonna build that positivity that, you know, they're looking for, and so. Yes, congrats to all that was involved in anything that had to do with hometown holidays, no matter who you were.
Thank you. Do you want to go now, Rich, or you want to wait a little while, or do you need to get back to whatever you?
Left, Rich. I told him we could go when he got here.
Okay. Just, I can introduce you or you can introduce yourself and just say. Rich is a firefighter at Pierce, an EMT in Pierce and former mayor of Hayter, and I don't want to get the title out, assistant.
I am the deputy emergency manager for region 11 in Pierce County.
In Pierce County. So, like, when you hear about the FEMA and the flooding and stuff, he was like the, say, like, the first point to go to and then on up from there, right?
Yeah, my boss actually could not be here tonight, Bobby Reiser in Lincoln had a state conference for the next few days. But I thought I should, after talking to Brian, kind of address the importance of taking some of the basic FEMA classes for everyone that is on the council, for the mayor, for the city manager. They recommend you take something, it's called NIMs, which stands for National Incident Management System. There are different classes. The ones that they want to see everybody have is NIMs 100, 700 and 200. What those do is it's just basic introduction to how the whole national incident management system works. If you ever do have something horrible happen here, they're going to expect everyone in leadership to know how to speak FEMA, for lack of a better word. It's a totally different language filled with acronyms you have never, ever heard of. The classes are not what you would call real exciting. Fortunately, right now, they are web-based. And you take them online and then you take a test online and you get a certificate. If you're not comfortable doing it that way, Nick Kimetz, who is the emergency manager in Wayne County, is one of the only people around here that is certified to teach all three of those classes. And I know after, they, we've got a big exercise coming up this spring in Wayne, after that is over, he said he would be happy to talk to you guys and set up something if you wanted him to come teach them.
What is the cost?
I, Nick did not say.
Online is free.
Online is free.
Right, but to have him come.
I, yeah, I don't know.
Do most cities, Pierce, Hayter?
Unfortunately.
Do the councils all have this training?
No. Have I asked them all to take the training? Yes.
What's the chain of command if you call somebody in Plainview and we have a problem? Where do you, where do you go?
The highest elected official is who FEMA and FEMA both will regard as your incident commander.
So, have you had all the classes?
Yes, I have.
But if Brian is not here, it falls on the next one down, and so on and so forth. That's why I really recommend everyone take them.
Isn't the fire chief somehow involved?
I, no, not in, I do not, I read the book before I came up here, and you guys do not have anyone listed as who your city emergency management is.
It used to be butched from, but I don't.
And if you do not have one, I highly encourage you to appoint one.
I'm just speculating, but I'm gonna guess several, several years ago when the, we went 100% rule is when we got away, 'cause the city has nothing to do with the fire.
Oh, I forgot about that.
That's just speculation.
You need someone who is actually sitting under city jurisdiction to take that position. Now, I will tell you, if something horrible happens here, if I am able to get here, you're going to see a lot of me. I think I lived in Pierce for three weeks, so.
Whenever something big happens, like the night of the hardware stir fire, he was here. Just in case we needed him for something.
I always show up in case you need something. I'm not the one who is allowed to speak for Plainview if something happens. They need someone who has not only the authority to speak for the community, but literally the authority to authorize people to spend money. Does that make sense?
And to keep very good accurate records to make sure you get reimbursed later.
Yes. Do you guys by any chance have? This is sure that's easier than this one. Anything that looks like these?
Cell phones?
No, your FEMA badge.
If you don't, we need to get you something.
Heavenly staff, all do.
All the city staff.
City staff.
All the city employees, that one.
Yeah.
Because I can tell you.
I have the one from when I was on the fire and then from Midwest, which I said expired last year, 'cause that was after the Pilger, 'cause they're good for four years, so.
As soon as someone gets up here, whether it's me or Bobby or whoever, if you don't have something like this and something major, major happen here, it's kind of questionable on whether we're gonna let you into town or not. We know exactly what your intent is at the time.
Example, the Wayne tornado, this one highway that the state trooper had blocked down, these people come in and say, well, I'm on the fire department in Wayne side, well, where's your badge at? Don't have it, he ain't getting into town.
When the tornado went through Pilger, you didn't get in without one, and that's just what it was.
It was easier when they had the flood in Niobrara, I drove up to the hill south of Niobrara and told the road guy, I'm here to take pictures for the newspaper, and he said, okay, go ahead. Worked alright.
Hey, what it works.
But not to belittle that, how long do these classes take?
Approximately three hours each one.
Take 100 takes three hours, 700 takes three hours, and I believe 206. They're going to restructure the way they teach these classes. And from what I have been told, the days of taking them online is not.
And see, when they first came out, they were in person and people didn't like that, so then they went to the ease of taking them online, so he could do them at 3:00 in the morning and 11:00 and 12:00.
What happened was, you know, you've taken government tests before. The government test, it's got to be public knowledge, and there are too many websites that you can just look up the test answers. So, no one was reading the information, they were just taking the test and. They were just taking the test and getting the certificate, which did you absolutely no good.
So do you get the badges after you do the classes? Is that the idea? Do you apply for the badge or do you have to earn it in classes?
If you want the certifications.
So what do we need then? If you got one of these badges, what do we need?
I mean, you need the glasses.
Yeah.
That's what I mean. And then does the badge come after the classes?
Don't you have one?
No, not the elected officials. Just the workers.
That is no, that is not connected to that. No.
So you just apply for that?
Courtney, it's the same paperwork that you filled out for the fire department. If you could get that to everybody that doesn't have one, we will get everyone what they need. Because I, I, believe me, I don't care if you're taking the classes, I want you to be in the incident command set.
What they do by the classes, it'll say it on the back of your badge or they'll scan it with like a reader and then it'll say on there that you've taken it. Otherwise, it'll just say that you're city council president, but that you don't have any of the classes. It'll just be a title on there.
If something were to ever happen or you had to interact with someone who wasn't in this room as far as an emergency, taking the classes is going to help you with what is going on.
For what it worth, when this came up on the agenda, I got on the FEMA website. They have a three-page reference guide for elected officials. There's a copy for each of them. You should perhaps read that and consider it for discussion if you're gonna authorize doing some of this.
Yes, thank you very much.
They have like 90 publications on that website. It's hard to find one that seems to be useful.
Some of them are really, really outdated.
So many of them. And this is really abbreviated and you can see it. The printed page has all those links that are, you click on if you're on the web and you can go to 50 more articles. But that's a start anyway.
Guys, have any questions for me?
Just real quick, Rich, like where I work in the medical field, if I'm out of town and I'm trying to get back in and something occurred here and they had everything blocked off, is this something that I should potentially?
Yes, uh, in Osmond, everyone at the Osmond Hospital has the same sort of ID. It says Osmond Hospital on it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that like we're.
We should get the same thing for everyone up here. Because.
Yeah, I mean, I have my hospital ID, but.
That isn't gonna do you any good. We need to get you guys back in town. So we also, and I'll talk to Bobby about it. And she will help create the, the organization that you want in the hierarchy and will be your best manager.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that because Osmond, you know, like where yours might have the clock in or clock out barcode or whatever, but Osmond, that is their hospital ID is the FEMA badge. They don't have a regular ID badge.
So I, I know, I'm hoping to get it done before spring. I wanna get the nursing home done in Pierce. Just because when we evacuated the nursing home, we could have very easily have misplaced someone. And I don't wanna take that chance. Because it was kinda chaotic and you know how that is.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks, Rich.
You guys need help with anything, let Bobby know. Either her or I, we will show up.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number five, discussion year-end report, Clown Dome Museum, Kareen.
Well, I hope this is for happy. So this is, I think according to our biologists, you're supposed to have a quarterly report, but you're gonna get the annual one. 510 visitors registered this year. That's the ones that registered, some did not. They came from 45 Nebraska cities, 23 states from coast to coast and Canada, France, United Kingdom, and the Philippines. A very successful year for the museum with the major draw this year being the Plainview Clown Festival in June. The museum was open June 1 through August 31, Monday through Saturday 1 to 4 and was manned by 15 very dedicated volunteers. On the subject of volunteers, we are sad to report passing of longtime volunteer Larry Bungee, who many of you know as a passionate supporter of both the museums in town. Our quest for the Guinness World Book Record, World Book of Records for Clown-related Items has made a stumbling block in that our officials are requesting an individual picture of each of the 7,894 items to be matched against the audited inventory log we've already sent to them. This is an insurmountable task and if our limited volunteers were trying to find a solution as we fill the world record, would be an excellent designation for us. We even sent them a video. We sent official documents to the people that watch this count. But even the official count was 7,894 clowns. We are well over 8,000 collections now and they continue to come and be donated to us. Our shelves are full and the collections we received this summer are being stored until we can make arrangements to expand. The vacant lot next door to the current museum has been donated to the city of Plainview, to the city of Plainview by a citizen for the Clown Dome Museum's expansion. We are in the process of forming a steering committee to begin the fundraising process and we do expect luck with that. The museum does remain admission-free. So on that note, we have assets and liabilities that amount to $4,617.22. We had individual contributions this year of $380. We had memorial bequests of $650 for a total of $1,030. The Pierce County Visitors Bureau Government Grant gave us $884. Our souvenir sales were $701. We did buy some souvenirs for a cost of $329. So our, we didn't come out ahead on the souvenir sales, but we expect to make that up next year. Total expenses for the year then was $936. Our net income was $94.95. And we do wanna thank the city of Plainview for paying our utilities, for mowing, for we care, and for utilizing and winterizing the building. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. As far as the expansion, we sent out an initial letter that was okay by Mike on October 14 to all, um, seven contract, we sent letters to six contractors. I did call John Weber because somebody said he was a contractor, but he said he isn't anymore, but we did make contact with him. To date, we have had two respond. Seth Noble, who lives in, comes house, of all of you know who that is. He just bought his father-in-law's construction bill, uh, business from, uh.
Rendell? Rendell?
Rendell. Coller was his name. And he's living there and he, um, has come and looked at the museum and looked at the site and is drawing up plans. And the other one this contact is, is Ronnie Evans. And Doug Pinkelman said he was too old to start a project like this. I couldn't, but, but he said it would help any contractors that would, if they would like to have yourself. I said, yes, we would. And A&R Construction says they don't do building construction. I don't know what they construct, but they don't do building construction.
Roads.
Yeah, well, anyway, but there was a nice email that they sent back and said, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for your dedication. Number six, discussion action ordinance number 951, water rates.
We've got both water and sewer on the book. I'll hand them both down. Actually, that's a sewer copy coming. We've gone over this with Mike. I think we've got all the numbers coordinated now. He'll, there's copies to take one and read one.
I will take a gamble.
As far as effective dates go, you know, an ordinance is effective after you pass it and published it. This thing just talks about year one, year two, year three. I think you would count, of course, from the effective date of the ordinance.
Sure.
You can start in that. And we'll just have to work the math as far as what month you get it in place. Or if you get it in place now, it will be close to calendar years. So Mike, you go ahead and work through your discussion. The content is there.
Yeah, we've been over this.
Since August.
Yeah, since August. And, uh, you know, I can tell you that the rates have been calculated and recalculated and refigured. Yes, I've heard the negativity and some of the complaints about percentages. And the best way to describe that to you, somebody says you got a 90% increase, a 90% increase of a dollar is a dollar 90. I mean, so you just have to take things in perspective. It's not the percentage. What I tried to do is keep it below the state, uh, even the average. And we're well below that even with the rate increases. You're at a point with the water infrastructure and the sewer infrastructure that it's needed. I mean, there's just no, we can't really, uh, it's built into the budget and the budget started in October. So the, the time clock, the stopwatch is on right now. And so I would recommend that you pass both of these as is and then decide how you wanna handle the second and third readings. But I would probably recommend that you waive the second and third readings as well.
Any further discussions since, uh, the budget workshops in August? I'll entertain a motion to, for first reading on ordinance number 951.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Bob? Tyler?
Aye.
Pam? Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes on the first reading. Would you like to?
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third readings.
Second?
Aye.
Tyler? Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Ordinance number 951 passes on all three readings and it will be published, is it three times in the paper?
I believe it's.
Something like that, yeah. Okay.
Are those rates immediate then or?
Well, like once they're officially published, yeah.
First published in the paper.
Okay.
So be pretty close to the January bill, if not the February bill, right?
Correct. I mean, as soon as it can be effectively put in, and there's the other thing, that Melissa will be inundated with changing the computers.
I don't know.
You just make your IT.
Yeah, our IT tech people will.
Send it to Lincoln and tell him to get busy.
Yeah, that's what I do. They just bring them in.
Okay, number seven, the same thing for the sewer rates, ordinance number 952.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number 952.
Okay, second? Pam? Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Passes on first reading?
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third readings.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 952 for the sewer passes on all three readings. Number eight, discussion action, ordinance number 953, city administrator's salary.
This, as you, you, as Curtis, Mr. Curtis passes it around, but now the ordinance, it's in the code. Oh, it's in the passage, I'm sorry. That's fine. But it's already set. You've already passed it a couple of months ago. It's just that, it's just one of those, uh, what do you wanna call?
We gotta amend.
Old laws.
Yeah, it needs to amend the ordinance because it's officially set by the ordinance.
And the other part of that, if you see on the agenda, is, uh, in front of you is the contract. And you can certainly do them, uh, play at the same time. The contract is something we've been talking about for quite a while. I think due to the circumstances of things that are certainly proceeding, that I, I would feel more comfortable. This is an ICMA contract. It's not one that I made up. I, I chuckle, but all you gotta do is put it next to Julene's and I think you're fine. I'm just fine. There isn't a whole lot you're gonna see that's, uh, extraordinary. So, and I think we went through it with Mr. Curtis and, um, I'll leave that in your hands, but I would like to have that contract.
The procedure is different for the ordinance. I think you should do the ordinance as a separate item and then proceed as the contract if you wish.
I would just like to make one comment on the ordinance. The salary posted here is not a big raise for Mike. It is the salary he's gonna be paid after his 3% raise, which the other city police got too. So I know some people call and give him a big raise. It's not a big raise. It's his 3% from his old salary. And this is his new wage right here on this, so it's not.
It's more of a, um, like I said, all you gotta do is put it next to Julene's contract. And you'll see that the amount is, uh, certainly just the 3% and, uh, and certainly what you've already passed a couple of months ago. It just, it has to be done by ordinance.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number 953.
Second?
Second? Uh, all, all in favor? Tyler?
Aye.
Pam? Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion passes on first reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third.
Second?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Ordinance number 953 passes on all three readings. Discussion action, employment agreement.
And you'll notice on the new contract, I meant through the contract that I reduced the amount on the severance to two months rather than three, which I think was the one that was requested. I don't have a problem with that.
Any discussion?
As Mike said, I write it over. I don't have any problem with the format. Policy is not my thing. But it provides you with some stability in both directions, that you know what the rules are and so does Mike. So I don't think it's a bad thing.
I know that it's been brought to us over the last two years.
It's been over a year and I've held off a little bit just for different reasons and that, but I, I think the timing was good.
I think so too. Well, I'll make a motion to proceed with the employment agreement for Mike.
Second?
I'll second.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam? Motion passes three to one. Number nine, discussion action, general administration contract in the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District Downtown Revitalization Grant. That's one of those acronyms Rich was talking about.
This is, um. We're working with Community Development Block Grant Fund for CDDG. So you have to have a certified administrator to manage this one free with which NIMET is. So they do this for us and I think they sat contract $3,000 because they're asking to do the administrative work and recording. All documentation required for a planning grant for the next.
As far as review of something like this goes, this is all their standard form stuff. They have copied it from government regulations and grant regulations. I don't really think we have much room to challenge it. And if you wanna hire them, the thing is rather long and complicated, but it says what it needs to say. Keep the grant people happy and say they'll take care of things. That's as far as I've reviewed it. I didn't think it was worth 10 hours of deep study. If I wrote them and said, I want you to change seven paragraphs, they would say that's wrong and we can't. And I think that's probably the way to approach it. If you wanna do it, you gotta do it according to the book.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the general administration contract for MDD, the DRT grant.
Second?
I'll second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then separately, we need them to, you know, to appoint our CDA committee to, as a DCR planning commission. Another reason for a creative gap in the screen.
So I would make a motion to appoint the current CD, or CB, CDA committee to be the grant creators, how do you say, or evaluators?
Downtown Evaluation Committee.
Commit, perfect.
Would you like to recommend the motion?
And then have some, one of us.
Did I say it wrong? I said it wrong, didn't I?
Nominate.
I nominate, I make a. There you go. One error per meeting, okay. Okay.
Well, I will make the motion to have the CDA. CDA.
Committee.
Committee be in charge of.
Second?
I'll second.
Pam? Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Just in case you need to know who the CDA committee is, it's the LBI four committee.
Right. Just with different hats.
Yeah.
Number 10, discussion employee health insurance renewal.
I don't know. You have it in your packet. Courtney's been very gracious about that. When the phone call comes, I dread this time every year, um, 25%.
When the phone call comes, I dread this time every year, twenty-five percent. And by the looks of it, we're already not happy with some of the parts of the plan as is. We're trying to work with our broker, Josh Sheerick, with Town and Country, and he'll be getting back to this. And everybody says we'll take a little longer time to start preparing. The problem with health insurance is those that are in the industry and those are aware of it, it's a quick turnaround. They give you the insurance quotes, which they just did, and the day after, he was notified that, get to look at. And then, so he will be bringing back in January, hopefully something palatable, something usable. I don't know if it's going to get any better.
Didn't you say in budget up to thirty percent could be?
I budgeted up to twenty percent, which I thought was plenty. Yeah, so I mean, twenty-five was, and it's not a point of time now we look at, they had a couple of other plans to reduce, but you're almost to the point then, you might as well forget it. And I'm not quite ready to go to LARM, which is the league's municipal pool. In a year or two, we might be able to do that, but they just got out of a lawsuit themselves and they won the lawsuit, so they're a solvent organization. But I'm just a little leery about how we would fit in to the pool to begin with. A couple of years, that may be an option, just not now. I don't have anything more. You have everything that we know, just other than your awareness?
I sent Josh a status report so he can quote us out to Blue Cross and United Health as well.
Thank you. Okay.
Did you just deal with Josh directly or is there others that come to the table or?
He's an appointed broker. At certain times along the way, we've only gone through two, since I've been here eleven years, two brokers. And the first one was Judy, which I thought she did a nice job out of O'Neal and I can't remember, she worked out of Warren Renner's office, but there were some problems with the council and Judy, so we ended up bidding it out, the brokers, and the really young ones that really came with any kind of experience or even some local knowledge was Town and Country and Josh. And he's done a wonderful job. I mean, I can't blame the broker for the faults and problems of the health industry.
Anything else?
As soon as those optional plans come in, you can be forwarding those to us.
Well, we'll wait until I think. Bringing up January meetings, as soon as they'll probably have them.
Yeah.
Do you know at this point how that will affect wages?
Well, Corinne, since you ask, I'll do it out publicly. We may be talking about this a little bit later, but it's, it's a fact that the stated twenty-five percent increase in the amount that we pay in, the three percent increase has now went down to about a minus two percent increase. Somewhere along that way. So if we, if we get a forty dollar bump in something, basically, I think it's about a hundred dollar change, so. We're all aware of it. Staff is aware of it. We've talked it at staff meetings. That's why we're going to try to do what we can.
Okay. Number 12, discussion action, resolution number five nine six, parking restrictions North King Street. Once again, I'd like to thank Dr. Arlt for, well, it's on purpose, yeah. Sorry. Yeah, I got it, no, I'm sorry. Yep. For opening up the dialogue and discussion. I talked to Tina and then I asked, went over and looked at it like Bob had said. My only suggestion, and again, we're just having discussion, is to leave the resident restricted in front of the houses and then the one south, let anybody park, with the caveat being on the west side where that is tight, the first stall north and south of the driveway, make those no parking. But I let Tina, that was my suggestion and Tina is here to speak on behalf of the residents. And then you can go after that if you.
Do you want to have them come up here?
Yep.
They're already recorded.
To an agreement.
Oh, do you want to come up to the court? Sorry, yeah. Or if you're in agreement, maybe come up at the same time. I don't know.
He made us there, right south of my house, or right, or right big Vazza Bird's house, to put a residential parking sign there and make it all the way up to the corner on that side and then what, south of there, go ahead and let whoever park.
Anything about the?
I mean, we kind of discussed a little bit.
Was there any discussion about on the west side, the first stall north and south?
I called some Bud.
Okay.
And he said on, they come twice a week. They come on Tuesdays and they're here before anybody's there. And when, on Fridays, that gentleman has a flex schedule, so he may be there early, he may be there during school hours. He asked him directly, said he's never had a problem gaining access. So as, as, you know, Tina maybe shared with you those maps, if there's no parking on the east side of King, okay, then that does make that a little wider. Should be fine still having a car parked on either side of the driveway. Should still be fine because, I mean, I think there were cars parked on both sides of King for quite a while before the restriction was enforced. And Bud said they, they still never had an issue. They were ever pulled up far enough and back in and it was probably tight. These guys are driving pros, so I guess I would like to still leave those two. And then as Tina maybe shared with you there, start the restriction where the circle is, all the way then north to Woodland, to include the residents and the town.
Sure.
So it would open up six of the, of the ten spots that are there that, that have been used, and so six is just, you know, usable.
Kirk, could look it up.
Let me take a look at it before we make any recommendations.
I have a question. Is it a courtesy or law that in front of your houses, you're parking for visitors?
Courtesy. That is open city land, so there is no such thing unless you're a private entity.
Do you even see you pay for the courage? I'm kidding.
All I must say is touche.
So Mike, my question would be then, if it is courtesy, are the current signs that say they're reserved for those residents?
That's, you know, the city ordinance bring in. Actually, I, as long as Kirk, and I think we will be, I mean, you and I talked just briefly on email, I certainly have no problems recommending compromise. I mean, that's what you're.
Just for the flow of traffic. And then also to get in and out of the spaces. I say no to that. Is this something? Is something down here?
Yeah, that's fine. I think, I think that's all I was pointing out, Mr. Mayor.
Nope, that's good.
I would suggest to you that, you know, basketball is happening.
Right.
If you want to get something on the book, I, it's somewhat less than a half a block.
Right.
If you measure it, I just kind of measure it. I mean, we could just, I've got a blank resolution here.
Okay.
We could say the south one hundred, approximately south one hundred and fifty feet to be verified by city superintendent and put up the sign and just say, you know, parking will be open to the public on the south, approximately the south one hundred and fifty feet, restricted to residents on the north and pass it tonight if you want to. And we can, we can make that accurate enough and the sign will ultimately.
Yeah.
Unless somebody has a better shot at the measurement, but approximately a hundred and fifty feet would be a little less. A little less than a half a block.
Right.
Seven, what wording do you want?
Here, let me hand this down. I mean, there's, there's the general format of the parking resolution, resolution. But it'd just be. We would just fill in this blank, open to the public on approximately the south one hundred and fifty feet to be verified by the superintendent and restricted to residential north at that point. I mean, that's the, that's everybody's understanding, isn't it?
Yes.
And does this have an effective date of two thousand twenty-five or when does this start? I don't know, he's back and he's not even listening.
Well, if you. Dr. Arlt, you missed it. He said, would this take effect from two thousand twenty-five?
So, so mean.
Well, it's not, it's not effective until you get the signs posted and that's going to take longer than getting it passed. You know, Courtney and I can have it cleaned up and ready for signature within a couple days. Open south one fifty, closed residential and handicap north of there.
Sure.
And then as soon as you can get the signs, you can put them up and it'll be done. You've got to get the signs up before you can hope to enforce anything. You've got to inform the public what the deal is.
Sure.
How many spots are we actually opening?
Six.
Well, they're predicting it as six.
Looks like four. Doesn't look like four.
The four north, regular and the handicap will still stay, but the south six will be open up to the general.
That's, I don't think everybody knows how a barrel of cars. I'll learn.
My only concern is on the south end of that block, the, the traffic and the turning. At the corner. At the corner. And then also where the trash does come in and out. Around that driveway on the west side. But those are my only concerns, just, you know, for people's vehicles and.
Well, I think, Dr. Arlt, we're suggesting that garbage trucks are not a problem, really, at least not according to their take. Will you just want to say five public spaces rather than six? Leave the corner off?
Just five.
Maybe you aren't going to decide tonight. I don't know.
Five more spaces really make that much of a difference?
Kirk, you don't have a problem. I mean, you, I mean, as a city superintendent, that corner spot doesn't look to be, is it of an issue? If it is, I mean, go ahead and agree with Julie and then we'll just call it out.
South them?
At south them, is that a problem?
You're not going to be picking up garbage down there anyway.
She's talking about more about the turn.
Just like turn in the corner.
No. He's only got a garbage truck, he hasn't an eighteen wheel.
Are you okay with that, Julie?
Yeah, yeah, I've just wanted to make sure.
But I don't know what the address is. What's Tina's?
What's your address, Tina? Two oh five? Tina? What's your address? Two oh five or?
Alma.
Two oh seven.
So you got two oh five, parking spot south of that address will be restricted. Everything south of there is open to public.
Yes.
And I don't know how many there is in there, four or five.
Six total. Six.
With the, with the one that's restricted right south of that driveway? Say again?
Well, if you.
I count six.
Hundred and fifty feet, it gives you six twenty-five footers.
I'm not counting, not counting that.
Want to check that map? Check that map.
Yeah, wherever's.
Is that with or without driveways?
I mean, Kirk, we'll just go out tomorrow, we'll take the wheels, we'll just measure. We'll use the GPS system and we'll take the county measurements and we'll go ahead and measure and we'll give you accurate numbers.
Any further?
If anybody wants to do something tonight, I think we could make the south hundred, approximately hundred and fifty feet work. If you want to wait until you've got a full legal description, wait, but you've probably got a month of cluttered parking in between here and there.
Yep.
Well, I make a motion to pass resolution five nine six.
Second?
On the.
Resolution just one, one time shot. Well, just approximately hundred and fifty, south hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
And we'll make it work.
Seconded by Pam. Any further discussion? Bob? Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Three to one, it passes. Resolution is only a one vote, so. Thank you again for the discussion, Dr. Arlt, for bringing that.
Appreciate.
No problem.
Mr. President?
Yes.
He voted no.
Yeah, the president voted no.
He did?
He did. Passed on a three to one.
Oh, we are, just because he is?
Just because that's his.
No, just because I think we should leave it like it is. For six, for five or six parking spots, I don't get the deal. Why you want to open that, close that street up? It's great for emergencies. I mean, you get cars on both sides of that street, it's a tight fit.
It is.
If we need six more spots to make six people happy, then we guess.
Thanks for the explanation.
Okay. Number fifteen, city attorney comments. We had to, we're going to skip.
Pass NIMs, okay. The only thing I've got for other comment is I did put off the Stewart dangerous dog trial. Chief Yostin had predicted that, that called me when we, when I asked him to be able to show up tomorrow, that he was hoping for a vacation week this week with family people coming from a distance, and it didn't seem necessary to get it done this week as opposed to some other time. So I called the court and we did put off the dangerous dog trial, probably for about a month with the holidays coming in. We'll be, it's not gone, it's still all there, but it's just postponed. That's the only other thing I have and what somebody has some kind of questions.
Number sixteen, council comments. Bob?
No.
Julie?
I'll reserve my comment.
Pam?
Right now.
Tyler? The number eleven, the discussion action employee wages for police personnel, we're going to do after we have the executive session.
Why isn't that part of public? Because.
It is. It's going to be, we have to come back into public, so. They just wanted to wait until after we. It'll still be in public. So I do not know how long the executive session will last, but obviously the library's open till eight or, I mean, we have to come out of executive session to come back into public session.
Bring me up to speed here before somebody's got to make a motion to go into executive session for a particular purpose.
Sure.
I mean, this, just the council into executive session?
No, all the city employees.
I, I really don't think that's possible. I mean, executive session is for the protection of the public interest or the protection of the individual reputation of one person who has not requested an open session. So if you're talking about individuals, it has to be one person at a time. And it's rather hard to formulate why discussing whatever irritations there may be in the administration is in the public interest to do it in private. I mean, how is it? Sure, it's easier for people to talk if they think they're in private, but you're only going to lose ten people out of this room. The rest of them are all still going to hear it. I mean, I, well, my point being, if there's going to be an executive session, it has to be in the public interest and/or for the protection of a certain individual's reputation who has not won an open session. The individual can ask for the open session and that's it. You don't have the right. So doing it in blank to just have a discussion and a bull session about what's making people unhappy is really not in the cards. I mean, why would it need to be, among other things? If you have other questions for me, I'll try and answer them, but the code is here and can be read over again, but that's what it says. If you need an executive session, it has to be for the protection of the public interest. Well, how does discussing employee grievances in private becoming the public interest? Public ought to know, I would think.
Are we talking about number eleven and number thirteen or just?
Number thirteen only.
Okay. Did we skip over number eleven or is that?
We were gonna wait until after we came out of thirteen to discuss in open session.
Well, I mean, I don't get the vote. The council gets the vote. Somebody has to make a motion to go into executive session for the protection of the public interest or for protection of some individual. I mean, if it's an individual, you gotta do it one, one meeting in one session at a time. If it's generally for the protection of the public interest and you're willing to say that and you believe it to be true, if the vote carries, then you go into executive session. I have a little trouble with the concept, but I don't get to vote.
Alex, go ahead with your question real quick, sir.
I just wanna know how we're doing with Hank's house.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Just change the subject.
Right, right, right. I was gonna ask to you. The asbestos has come back and we have that all set and now, I just got a phone call this morning. I'm trying to line up a, I thought it was gonna be Rick, but that's not gonna be like we had in the health board meeting. I didn't know if that was gonna happen or not. He's not. So I'm trying to line up that person to go in there. I still have to go ahead and make sure we're gonna put that cost against the, the deal, but we're gonna try to get it down ASAP. This isn't gonna bother anything with the weather, so.
So is Mr. Hank's gonna sell that property or have you talked to him or?
No, he is willing to go ahead and do it, but he is not gonna sell it right now at this point.
Oh, he's gonna pay for that and, and the?
The city's gonna end up doing it. We're gonna end up having to lean against it and then, you know, probably when it's sold, you know how that goes. So, but we gotta get it cleaned off, so that process of getting the contractor to do it. There is asbestos in the house, which we all figured, and it's gonna be one of Kurt's favorite things to do. He's shaking his head already.
Figure remove that and then what on demolishing the?
Yeah. Subway with hardware store, if anybody's interested in that, that's good to go, except they ran into, the state had a question about procedures. And Josh Schmitz just replied back to the state, so that will be probably on its way out too within weather permitting the next two, three weeks.
The procedure on how to take it out of there?
Yeah, because it's a burned building and when asbestos, when it's deemed to be, if you can't find an asbestos spot, it's deemed to all be asbestos, so you have to treat it as such. So we have to be very careful when they're digging it out, plus Dennis had required, back up. They required Dennis Johnson and Josh Schmitz to bring in an engineer, which they have coming in from Yankton, to take care of the problem between the adjoining walls of the telephone company and the hardware store to make sure no damage is done. So they had to get an engineer and I think at a cost of right around two grand. That's my update on that.
Okay. And the only thing Grant told me was that when they do demolish it, nobody's allowed to be inside the telephone company building just for safety.
Well, that makes perfect sense, actually.
I'm used to it.
So the other thing, I understand it's government, not private, but some of the employees and myself agreed that any company, if you're meeting with your employees, you don't invite the general public in and that's why they were, some of the employees had also requested to be an execu-, but again, the council votes on it, so.
This is just a little technicality. Do our taxes help pay wages?
Yes.
For the city?
Yes.
So then I rein out their employer?
Yes. Well, you're our employer and then.
So then we could be at the meeting.
We have to say, well, a brief synopsis or whatever, when you come out of executive, I mean, you can't say everything, but you have to.
I know when we went to executive session for school board, we had to state who it was and that was the only thing we could talk about.
Right.
In that executive session.
Well, that's my concern with the general concept is, you know, the whole discussion, it needs to be private for the public interest. And if it's about an individual, you gotta go one person at a time.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, as you will. You know, you can make no decisions in an executive session. You could have a conversation with certain employees. You could have a conversation with one employee at a time. That'd simplify it a bit.
I guess, listening to Bruce here talk, the city employees, would you guys like to do one at a time? Or are you open to maybe talk tonight and get your thing resolved?
What do you think?
Are you okay?
I'm okay talking. I don't, I don't.
We have, we have a staff and if you wanna ask them, that's fine. I just understand the sensitivity and I'm not the one saying one way or the other. There are some sensitive subjects here and probably, to be honest, enough is enough. And things are gonna come to a head on several issues and it could, man, maybe the public will like it, but I mean, it could come to, it could get fairly ugly. Uh, I was trying to protect some reputation of some people who have done some things in the past month, past two months and we'd like to bring those, it's, I, it's more than a grievance. We'd like to bring those concerns. And if the staff, you're fine. I've already been told in staff meetings, which by the way, I do not bully, um, they have that option. It is their call and whatever they wanna do and they, like I said, they are a little concerned, anything they might say. You know, no matter what you say about being open and Bob, you know, and I talked about that, but they're still not gonna be as open as they should be. And, and that's fine. I mean, it's, I certainly will have a couple of things to say. And I know Courtney, I'm not speaking for her, but she just said she's fine with it as well.
They're fine with it, yeah?
You guys all okay?
Troy?
Jerry? You guys good?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we'll be open. Yeah. Speak.
I'm gonna move further closer.
I'll be the one to go first. I don't care. So, as everybody knows, I have been the deputy clerk for quite some time. And I started out as the deputy too, which it was with Lori and Nancy, as I was to answer the phones and be the gopher and everything, which I was okay with that. I was a newbie. No big deal, nothing at all about that. And then, um, everything that happened with me coming in prior to me, I walked into pretty much a hellhole. Like where things were thrown at me about the embarrassment and everything and I had to pretty much buck up, put my fit girl pants on and be like, okay, this is how I can do it. And then when the trial came, Nancy and Lori did one of these things, said, here you go. You do it. You take care of it. You go do the meetings. I didn't. I pretty much sucked it up, didn't know what I was doing and then brought Kelly in. Kelly ended up leaving. I had till Courtney came. There were several days where I balled at my desk 'cause I had no idea what I was doing. Here I am answering the phones and then all of a sudden someone's saying, well, tonight's council meeting, got the packets and payroll are ready to go? What are you even talking about? So, I mean, there's a lot that we do internally that Courtney and I feed off of each other and we work together. And then we had Angie, who was our deputy too, who was helping me do a lot. She was the solid waste biller. I was utility billing. When she became pregnant, she decided she was going to not come back, so guess what? I took over her job and now I'm doing two jobs, solid waste billing, water and util, water and sewer billing, which likely we don't have the luxury, so it's not as bad. But I'm doing two jobs. I'm one person. There are some reports that I'm supposed to give Mike and Courtney that have been pushed off to the side because I seriously'd rather get bills out than say, oh yeah, we took this amount of trash to the LP Guild this month. So that, I, when you guys approved my wage, which three percent, okay, I can live with that, but you guys didn't even consider the, the paperwork, the questions that they asked me, the evaluations. You didn't even ask, you haven't even asked me, you know, what all do you do during the day? Do you sit on your thumbs? Do you just answer the phones? I mean, it kinda, it kinda hurt. It wasn't, you know, that you guys approved the three percent. I'm okay with that. I mean, granted, it does suck when insurance comes and I'm probably gonna have to pay more, that three percent's not gonna do anything. But it sucked more that you guys didn't even consider, take even a few seconds to even look at them or anything. So that kinda hurt. And also, to make it clear to everybody, Mike does not bully me at all. He, I know that was something that was out on the street.
On Facebook, probably.
I have no idea, but I tell Mike exactly. If he makes me mad.
No, I was told by two people and so I asked her to get her side.
If he makes me mad, you're gonna know it. And a lot of people probably already know that about me. If you, if you make me mad, you're going to know. I mean, I cannot hide my emotions at all. Like I suck at that. If I'm having a bad day, ten to one Courtney and Mike know about it. And so that really sucked when, you know, that came out and then I was asked that because I tell Mike how I feel every day on, if he does something that makes me mad, he's gonna know it. That or I just ignore him and act like he doesn't exist.
I'm used to it.
Yeah. But, so like with that, everything that's going on with the Facebook page too, they lump, like the public lumps everybody into it, even if they're talking one person, that kinda hurts too. And you guys haven't even asked, you know, hey, how are you doing on that, you know? You know, what's your feelings on this or whatnot? Like, no one, no one's even asked me in the office. Um, yeah, it just sucks that I'm doing a job that two people. I got hired in '09 as a, there's three of us in the office and now it's two of us doing a three-person job. So that's what I really wanna stress, that we, Courtney and I picked up the slack quite a bit. And that no one has asked me, but my job consists of a monthly or anything, so. And I'm sick of just the he said, she said stuff. If you have a question for me that deals with me, ask me. Don't ask the public and then, you know, I mean, if you have a problem, pull me off to the side and tell me. Even, even the public, you guys have a problem with your water bills or anything, just ask me, ten to one. If there is a mistake, I'm going to be like, oh man, I am so sorry. Let me look into it and fix it and see what if I can't fix it, I always take it to Courtney and Mike to have them help me fix. But, yeah, I was just, I don't do good with people accusing or having accusations, I should say, not accusing. I mean, there's a lot of things that have gone on since I started in '09 and it just, it sucks.
Can I say something at this meeting? I gotta ask a question.
You sure can, Green.
Okay.
You can ask me.
I went to the budget meetings and the budget was proposed with the proposed wage increases. And I still, I'm gonna ask this for about the sixth time, I don't understand how you can approve a budget with those figures. And then when it comes to wages, you do that separate and then you don't give them the wages. I don't, still don't understand that.
It, it's common. I, I wish it wasn't, but you don't assume the budget is what it is. I've been through this too many years to know that, um, just because it's in the budget, you don't always get it. And I respect the, you know, the council because it can fluctuate all over the place, but, um, yeah, I, I protect the budget. I take great care. I, I take months and months of preparing the budget and I take it very personally.
So the question is, how can you approve it and then not, just because it fluctuates? I understand the budget is just.
It's a budget, the term.
But if you're looking at the budget here, yeah, you know, this looks pretty good and I, it did look good. And then you, and I, and I think, Mr. Smith, you said I wanna be financially responsible and I, I applaud you for that. I, and you should be, but you looked at the budget, you said it was okay, but then nobody gets a raise. They all get it straight across the board like everybody did everything. It's just a question.
Yeah, but the budget is a budget. It's not set in stone. It's not.
Green, and that's been an ongoing question for.
Forever.
Forever.
Yeah.
And, you know, the fact that there's a budget for a dump truck doesn't mean they voted to buy a dump truck. It's possible and it's in the plan, but until they vote to buy the dump truck, they didn't buy it.
It just takes a lot of work for, you just go, oh well, don't worry about those.
Well, but that's the, but that's Mike, that's been Mike's approach forever. Here's what I think the budget should be. They don't go into every item, they write to the rock bottom and they pass the budget.
Right. No, but let's just keep it to the employee discussion for now, please.
And I don't think a lot of people also realize that I am the brunt of if someone comes in, if they're mad. I'm the first one they see. And sometimes I try to de-escalate some of them, like by asking them a question or try to get them a little calmed down. Ten to one, it's not gonna happen, but I'm the one that, the phone call, that gets the brunt, the mad ones. And I think, you know, some days I wish I could have a bulletproof window too, because sometimes you don't know. I mean, I have a lantern box that will save me from someone flaming into my door, but, you know, I am the first one they see and there are some days where they yell at me and how much I really want to yell back. I have to smile and say thank you and, you know, I don't, I mean, in my evaluation, I was brought up too on, you know, my reaction to people and everything, which could use some work sometimes, but.
It's tough to do in your situation, Melissa.
It is. It is, but I try. So, do you guys have any?
I appreciate you coming forward with this.
I think, uh, I was speaking for ninety percent of the staff.
Yeah.
You know, we, when I started, we had six guys. We're down to two.
Yeah.
Troy can do anything. He can, he saves the city millions just on his ability to fix things. We don't have to contract it out or whatever, you know, it's just. When you guys went to the, the, uh.
Raises?
Raise, raise, it looked like it was a rehearsed deal, man. Boom, 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 just gone. It's like, come on, guys. You guys didn't even think, and nobody even looks at evaluations.
This is the first year I gotta look at every.
Brian, you looked at evaluations. There wasn't anybody else.
Every year we always get the recommendation.
I, I am very frustrated on the evaluation process. We were told for three months to do evaluations. We did them. Nobody except Brian looked at them. I recommended Kurt to make what Raleigh left when he left here. Kurt saved this city. You guys have clean drinking water every day because of Kurt. If Kurt's not here, we're drinking bottled water and I hate to say that. He should be making forty-five thousand dollars a year and that's still short in my opinion. Troy should be making more. Melissa should be making way more than she's making right now. I wouldn't do what she did for thirty thousand dollars a year. I have never asked for a raise. Ask Mike. I don't ask for a raise. But base what your people do on what you give them for a raise. We're not all equal. We're all individuals working for the city, doing the best we can. So if I get a one percent raise and somebody gets a ten percent raise, I better step it up next year so I can get a better raise. That's why we do evaluations every year. It's a merit raise. It's not a cost of living. It's a merit raise. My recommendation for next year is the personnel committee will now do evaluations with each employee and that committee will bring that back to the council with their recommendation 408. I was very frustrated with the three percent straight across the board, not for myself, but for the people that bust their butt every day. I don't wanna get up at two in the morning and go grab a snowplow. I don't wanna be down in a hole fixing a water main when it's twenty below zero. Look at what your people do for your town. We had flooding for FEMA for three days and you had sewer and water that did not back up in your basement. It did, but you still had clean drinking water to drink. Other towns weren't so lucky. Those guys slept out at the lift station on a piece of board next to all the sewer that was running through there. You couldn't pay me enough to do that.
Ask them what they did the last two or three days and I have to go along with these guys. Um, unbelievable. And like I said, I will say, now that things are done, I would appreciate on the council, the reviews are there for a reason. If not, just don't use them. I would say that if there's a recommendation being made, please take some more consideration and compromise and if it isn't something in there, at least look at them. Uh, I, I mean, Kurt is invaluable and, and to think that he's making less than Raleigh, I don't get it.
I guess it's, it's budgeted in. Financially, the money is there. Um, I know that. I look at those numbers every day. I know how much money we have every day. I know if we can't buy something, I'll tell them, you can't buy it. We don't have the money for it. I said, but if you want quality employees, you need to pay them. You have a lot of experience with Troy and Kurt and Melissa, that if they're gone, I don't know what you're gonna do. You don't just find a water operator on the street. They're hard to come by, and that comes not from me, that comes from people on the state. People that work for Royal Water have said, how is Kurt only making that much money? I gave you that stuff in, in your packet. I hope you looked at it as far as the rate, I mean, you, we didn't raise the water, water and sewer rates to give ourselves raises, 'cause we get the same, we get the same increase.
But that was also asked by the public too. I just wanna state that.
I know, but, I mean, that's, that's not why we're raising rates. It's part of it.
The, the community perception.
Perception or it doesn't.
I know, but that is also for us to, to talk to, you know, because it's asked, so we also take that into consideration too. We know, we know.
Can you go ahead and just air out the, you know, just clear the grievances, because I don't, I don't want this to be a back and forth. I think you just need to understand from employees, and I know there's several, you got the police yet.
Yeah.
And I haven't even started with the, the police and that, so, and I know Tyler, I'd like to have Tyler and Jerry, you know, they've got some things. Oh, and she's got a couple more.
I made a list.
She's got a list.
Um, I just, I just ask if you guys have questions on anything, please ask us. Don't, I don't, I don't like to hear things third-hand on the street that this happened or we're doing this or this is on the, no. If, if I don't, if you wanna know, ask me. Ask how many days I've been gone.
Zero.
Zero. My last vacation day was a month ago for four hours. I don't take time off. That's my own fault, but I'm always there to answer questions. So I don't like to hear things, and it's my fault, but I don't like to hear things on Facebook that this is happening or this is happening. Especially from council members or other, you know, other people, I don't like to see that. So please just ask me. I'm always there to answer your questions. And I think if you ask what we do every day, you'd have a better understanding as to why we get frustrated that we only deserve the three percent raise. I had someone walk out on me today and storm out of the office when I kindly told her I'd like to wait on this because you're not gonna be around to discuss it, and she was mad at me. I was doing her a favor. And I got, I got the brunt of that. I didn't scream at anybody. I just thought it was very much, I'm trying to do the best thing in the best interest of somebody and they got mad at me.
We see this more than you think. All the time.
With all businesses. I mean.
All businesses?
They don't go off on people because they're respectable, hardworking, taxpaying.
You got it.
Okay. Tax payers.
You got it, take care.
Pay their salary, they do their job. Wes. Respectful.
This might be why you go into executive session.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's very hard when, when you answer the phone and that person just automatically just starts laying India. You know, you have to listen to them and then, you know, that's, that's not a way that you call people to say, I understand their frustrations. I said, we're human, we make mistakes, but we'll try and fix it. And, um, it's hard when you leave the office, but you don't leave, you still see those people every day. You still see them. And that's hard. It's part of the job, I understand that, but you have to just turn the other cheek and just go on with things and, and be done with it. So, like I said, I, I was very frustrated with the valuation process. I'd like to see it different come this next year. I hope you're willing to do that. That way it's not coming just from us in the office. You have two people on the council that'll be bringing that to you. So it's two of you that will bring that to the rest of the council for recommendation. Um, but please just pay your employees for what they're doing. You know, that, it's hard to come back to work when you're like, well, I, I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, we figured it out. I got a sixty-one cent an hour raise. It's tough. It's tough, guys.
Based off of our, based off of, I mean, I know in my employer is between a zero and three percent raise. What is yours?
Usually one or two.
Tyler, what's yours?
Oh, yeah.
I, and I'm not basing your guys' off of mine, but it's, when you're looking at a budget, when you're looking at, um, redoing the water meters, all of that, when you're looking at switching to the electricity to someplace else, you don't, you know, nothing is guaranteed with all of those.
The point, and I'ma let.
And, and I'm, I'm grateful when my employer gives me a two percent raise, because it's at least a raise.
You're very grateful for the raise, but, you know, when, again, I wanna bump Kurt up to where I think he should be.
Right.
He's not what he's had.
If you don't, if you don't give me a raise, I'm not hurt about it. But when I see, I wanted Kurt to be at a certain level, I want Troy to be at a certain level, and Melissa, and it doesn't happen, that frustrates me because I know what they do every single day.
Right.
In and out.
Question though, in your jobs, when you took those jobs and they started you at your wage, did they start you where you were worth? Or did they start you in a tryout level to see what you could do?
Tyler.
You probably started where you were worth based on your experience.
No, actually, there's, there's a, a, an array, the high and low.
Okay.
And when you first start off at our organization, you start at the very lowest.
Okay.
Because I started there and I had an experience and I started at the very lowest. I work in HR, I know how it is.
Okay.
But there are a lot of employees who get a half a percent wage increase. There's some that only get a one percent. And it's frustrating for them, but it's, they could.
I think I'm getting at is, some of the positions that we have in the city were started, like Melissa, for example, she was to do this one job. Now she's doing two jobs. That's morphed into something different that a two to three percent raise isn't gonna catch her up anytime soon.
Right.
Do you know what I make? Like, do you know what I make? Any of you know what I make?
Between all your different organizations?
No. For you. Do you know what I make for you?
Sixteen fifteen.
Sixteen fifty. You know that I can go work for Hobby Lobby full-time and get full benefits and be better? Do you know that I'm the only developer in this entire northeast Nebraska region that can write you grants? Do you know how much millions of dollars I've saved you in some of that stuff? How many millions we've funneled in here into the county for the city alone, over eight hundred fifty-five thousand? Another half a million coming in a year, reinvesting in your downtown. Is that worth fifteen bucks an hour to you? Think about it. The only reason I went and took the job in Creighton was because I was gonna, I have to find a way to make it work. So you see my report, ten to fifteen projects at a time, on top of all the volunteer stuff. Same thing happened to Creighton, same thing happens, Mike's on my PCD board, he sees how many projects are going on. Is it fair that I work seventy hours a week to make it work? No, it's not. That was done out of necessity. But nobody asked me a question. In my other communities, that city council member sits on one of my ED boards, I don't have an ED board here. That's on, like, they know what we do. They make that recommendation. They know what we get paid. That's not happening here. If you want to keep people, you have to pay them what they're worth. And that's not happening here. And you're, and you're asking for certain things like evaluations? I didn't get one. I didn't get one last year, I didn't get one this year. It didn't matter, I guess, 'cause we didn't look at them, but, why? There's things going on that you guys don't necessarily see, because you're not in our office and you're not, you're not going, you're not there to see what's happening. Maybe you should job shadow us one day a year to figure out what we all do and see what we go through to give you a better idea when you come into this situation, you know? And I know I'm a little bit different. I'm not in the office, I'm kind of on the outside. I don't know if I'm a contractor or whatever I am, yeah. But you know.
Courtney still has a few things to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just jumped in.
No, that's fine.
I know Tyler and everyone to go. Do you wanna go? Do you wanna go?
Yeah, um, and I, I guess I will just chime in in here and say that, well, the, the term across the board, three percent is been thrown out this evening. And that's not necessarily true. Police department is part of the city. Okay? The whole city did not receive a three percent across the board. Mine has not been discussed. It gets discussed now. I guess, my, first and foremost, I guess, I just am trying to understand why have, why have my raise not been discussed?
I'd have to go to Mr. Holt. Why did we delay the police?
I remember why you, there wasn't, it's part of that.
Mike said you hadn't received our evaluation.
Oh, that night you got done.
So you were unable to make a recommendation. Okay? Um, this is nothing new. I went to my personnel file. The only one in my personnel file over state offices is twenty nineteen. Mar, our, and by our, I mean Jerry, Bruce and I's evaluation scores were in the budget packets. Then they were not.
They were. Your scores were in there, just like ours, just like ours.
I guess I'm, I'm just curious as to why ours was not discussed then.
Who did your evaluation?
Mayor's sake, former mayor's sake.
Who did, who does the office?
Bruce does, Jerry and I's.
Say Mike and Courtney did mine.
And then Kurt is a supervisor. I do it with the staff. And then with Courtney, with Melissa, and then there was one for Kurt and Courtney as well, which is what you received and done.
I guess what I'm just saying is, this year hasn't been any different than any other year. Bruce always does our evaluations, you know, with help and or opinions from the mayor. At that time it was Darren's sake. I guess I'm just curious as to why ours got put on hold.
I think from my perspective, Tyler, is issues going on with the city. The dog issues. Me personally, I want these issues resolved.
I do too, trust me.
And no, and this, and let me, hear me out. I want these issues resolved. I believe that pay raises are based on job performance. And I'm not saying you guys are bad. I appreciate everything you do. And I know you go out every day and you risk your life. I believe that. But still, there's ordinances in the book for the police to follow.
Absolutely.
And if, and if a group of them are not following them, then I think it needs to be hashed out.
A group of what?
Uh, ordinances. The dog issue, there was the unlicensed vehicle issue. There's a pending lawsuit with the police chief. There's something.
Me or Jerry?
That, I'm just saying it's in general. And that's not the only reason.
As I like to call it, I'm so, I'm sorry, guys, the numbers in boxes.
Yeah, no.
It's numbers in boxes. That's all it is to you guys. I understand that.
No, it's not.
And if there's something up, no, I tried to bring it up.
No. What it is, is people getting attacked by dogs. That's what it is. And nothing done about it. That's what it's about. And I'm not singling you.
But you are by not discussing my grades.
Well, I'm telling you why. There's issues with the police that need to be hashed out.
Okay.
And it's all, it's all waiting on this lawsuit and there's another issue.
Why does my raise have anything to do with Bruce Yielston's lawsuit?
He might be referring to the dog bite.
Yeah.
The dog.
The dogs in general. There's issues we need to handle.
Stewart's.
Okay, what about that?
Well, I think that's what Bob's referring to.
Yeah, I mean, and there's more dog issues.
The dog that's no longer in town. The dog that was not my case.
But what did it take to get it out of town?
Say what?
What did it take to get it out of town? Um, Tyler, I want you guys to go, and I want you, no, no, I'm talking about you, I'm talking about everyone in general. I want you to go in a situation like that and you handle it and don't rely on Bruce to do a lawsuit on his own. What is the point of that?
Citation issue.
Well, what did it take to get that?
They, they were not turned over to Courtney's rights. I agree with you there.
That's what I'm saying.
But, you know, we're human. We are human, we make mistakes.
But this happens all the time. In fact, the stolen vehicle, the stolen vehicle that happened on the east end, that ended up at the bar.
Okay.
Okay, I heard that it was found over there and instead of running the plates to see if that person had a warrant, had anything going on, that, that person was just gonna be let off.
No, I worked that case.
I'm just, I'm just going off the hearsay.
I was up there, I talked to the victim, whose car it was.
Mm-hmm.
And a deputy come up and they took the victim home, to a friend's house. And I drove around town, I found that vehicle there, and it was not parked yet, it was still turned on.
Mm-hmm.
I did not wanna go in the bar and find him and come out, steal it and take off.
Right.
All right? The deputy got there, they went in, I washed the car and they arrested the guy. And he had a warrant on him and we were gonna arrest him anyway for unauthorized use of a motor vehicle. So I don't know where you got your facts out on that.
I'm just saying, I just heard it. I don't have any written facts, nothing like that. That is just what I heard. I'm not on that Facebook.
You're taking care of your lemon, you're doing right.
No, and, you know, there's just, there's different instances. There's one that a kid was during, doing, doing burnouts in front of Vaterna's house. And instead of our police department writing a ticket on it, Vaterna said that he had to do the light work on it.
Vaterna seen it happen and then he called and I got there and he goes, give me your ticket, bro. I gave him my ticket, he wrote him up and he was off duty. I never seen this kid do it. I did take pictures for him. He wanted to write the ticket, he wrote the ticket.
That isn't the story that Vaterna told me, but that's, you know what, it's said and done, but I.
I can't write a ticket if I don't see it happen unless I investigate it and get the person that's doing it and he admits that he got it.
You know, and I'm, I'm not saying you guys could be everywhere and do everything, but when I'm sitting in my living room, in my house, and I hear these damn trucks coming into town going, brrrr, I'm sitting in my living room, in my house.
I can hear them.
And it's day after day after day, isn't there a sign out there?
Yes, absolutely.
So what are we doing?
Have you watched them?
I hear them, I don't have to watch them.
What?
I hear them.
Absolutely, you hear them.
Don't we have a sign?
It brings echo.
Well, still, but.
Every tanker, uh, every tanker stops at the thirteen, Frey Road crossing. They jake every time.
Yeah, but.
They jake coming into town from the north as well.
I don't doubt that one bit.
Yeah. But I'm just saying.
Right there at the intersection where the stop sign is, is where city and city limits start.
So, I mean, I don't know. Tyler, I'm not, I'm not picking on anybody.
I, I know you're not picking on me, but my, my question still stands.
And I just answered it. Me personally, no raise for the police until we get issues solved. That, that's, that's what I think.
We are individual officers.
Yeah.
We have individual cases.
I don't know. I don't see it that way. I see if things aren't getting done, then it needs to get done.
But I think there are things getting done that you don't know about.
I know there is. I'm not saying that it's bad, I mean, you guys don't do nothing. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying these other things are serious. Like the dog thing was serious. That was no run-of-the-mill, let-it-go thing. That was serious.
The dog attacked another dog, absolutely. It's not the first time it's happened.
But it could've did it to a kid. I mean, I'm just saying.
But it didn't do it to a kid.
Yeah, well, that, that time, but anyhow, no, I, I'm done.
I, this just goes back, this just goes back to where I said, we're all individuals. You cannot group everyone together. But I know there's issues with the police department, don't get me wrong, but you can't tell me that Tyler and Jerry have done nothing this year to deserve a raise.
Saying that. I'm not saying.
Then why are we not giving them one?
I'm not saying that, because things need to get fixed before. It's, it's, it's a group effort. It's not just one person.
Do you have more to say, Courtney?
No.
Were you, were you done, Melissa?
No.
How about you, Troy? You wanna take a shot at it? I, I just, you know, I'm pretty, when I first started twenty years ago, like Kurt said, we had six guys. We're down to two and a half. And just as much is getting done. Kurt and I, we're, we're the same age almost. We think alike, things, you know, I agree his mind, he agrees my mind. That's the way I look at it. But it just, it would be nice if somebody walked in shop, some Prime's in the shop, what are you doing? You know? I think Courtney hit it when they had jobs out. I'd like to have somebody come out and go out there at C and D and write a dozer for me one time. You'll find out.
I did, and, yeah, and Mike knows the first time I was on the council, I'd suggested that, 'cause they did that in Oklahoma where I lived. And I did write with Chetty one time to Jackson and I brought it up to others on the council and they're like, why would I do that? None, none of you, but the council before when I was on, yeah.
You know, I, I, I hear things, you know.
Do you feel like we need to, to hire another guy or two? If we went from six people and we're down to two and a half, do you think that we need to hire another person in your department or two? I mean, God forbid something would happen to one of you and we have all that knowledge and expertise. I mean, don't you think that possibly we need to hire somebody to get them trained as well?
We're gonna have to hire a water operator because we can't get by without, we gotta have a backup.
Yeah, if you remember right, this was an experiment.
Something happens to me tonight, man, you guys are screwed.
Right.
You know, 'cause you have to have an operator.
Do we need to hire more office people too?
No.
Them guys, I mean, I don't care who it is, Holton, he cannot make decisions on the water side. You've got to be licensed.
And there's certain grades, right? One, two, three, four, I believe, or?
You need to be oper, you have to have a certified license.
To make any major decisions.
Do you have more, Susan?
I just.
We're taking.
We're just taking, just employees, huh?
Okay.
Do you have more, Susan?
I've got a few more.
Jer, just, Jer, oh, go ahead.
I get the opportunity to work in other towns.
I get the opportunity to work in other towns, and you guys. It's sad that we have to bring this to your attention, that you don't see it. We went from six to two, and you didn't think, as a council, hmm, maybe we should do something about that.
That's six to two, that just didn't happen this last year.
No.
No. That's happened over years.
But.
They can speak up too.
Think about that, too.
I mean, you guys can ask for them.
I think it's just sad that we have to be in situations where we bring it up. You know what, the guy that I work with in Creighton, who's Kurt, Creighton Kurt makes, seventy-five thousand a year. For his level of expertise. I mean, there's just, I really think you guys need to job shadow some of us, figure out what we really do, and pay people what they're worth, forget the percentage crap, just pay people what they're worth.
Thinks that they're, not that you guys aren't, I think I'm worth more than what I make. I think everybody in their position thinks that, and I know some of you aren't getting paid what you probably should be getting paid. But we also have a budget, we, I, I wanna be fiscally responsible for things that might come up within the city. And that's part of the reason why we're on this board. I, I'm sorry. I can't job shadow you guys, I work Monday through Friday, seven forty-five, eight o'clock till five o'clock, five thirty. I'm sorry, I can't job shadow during the day.
I work weekends.
Jerry and I work nights and weekends.
I'd be more than glad to come out on the weekend.
To be fair, there are some things, Julie, I don't want to put you in the middle of them. I spent forty-five minutes at a guy's house last night, calming him down.
Oh, I can believe it.
Courtney and Mike know who I'm talking about.
And I could probably guess, and I could probably guess.
Probably. You know, it's, I guess my, my question to you is, things need resolve.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what do you suggest me to do? What do you, what? What am I to do? What am I doing wrong, how do I fix it? How do I get that raise? What do I need to do to strive to be better at my job? And commit to this town to deserve a raise? What have I done wrong, and what do I need to do to fix it?
Are you taking another position in a neighboring town?
Uh, I part-time in Osmond, yes.
Okay.
I have had chat with James Besimer and two of their city council members, absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
That's. I, I've got no problems admitting that.
I think when you're talking police, it's the group of police. You individually get your own reputation.
Thank you, Karen, thank you, Karen, okay. Um, we've got a member, you know, Vicki. Barney and Stacy came over to my house, dropped me off cookies. Cookies, you know, but that shows appreciation, okay? That's nice, this warmth, this platform, shows appreciation, that's nice. I don't do this job for a pat on the back, I don't do this job for applause and whatnot. I do this job because I care about this community. I care about this community 'cause I grew up here. I got my bachelor's degree at UNL, criminology and criminal justice, I have a minor in psychology. I moved back to this town, I am raising my family in this town, for a reason. Because I am dedicated to this town.
And I believe last year-
So if I need to find appreciation elsewhere, then that upsets me. It's not that I'm saying that you guys don't appreciate the job I do, because you do, this is one thing that shows it. Vicki, thank you, that's another thing that shows it. What doesn't show it is, what am I to do? I am an officer, Jerry is an officer. It is not, I've, I've mentioned this to Mike and Courtney, it is not my department.
Right, and I can appreciate that, and then last year, we did, last year, we did give you guys-
Absolutely.
Raises, because we're, I mean, grateful, and I believe you two got more than another officer.
Yes, we did.
Based off of what you guys have done for our community.
Been that way in the almost eight years that I have been here.
Right. Now, I know that your raises haven't been on the agenda, because I thought they were put off because of the chief didn't turn over the evaluations, and we were waiting for all of that. That was my last, I mean, knowledge of why it wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, I think that was my first meeting up, so what was the case is-
Very easily could've been.
I think that was the first time you were here.
Yeah, Chief Yielson didn't turn over the paperwork for the evaluations.
And, and that was your first meeting, period, so.
Right.
You never saw a bunch of chiefs, like, the evaluations never were in there. I mean, what, I-
But that's why it wasn't on the agenda, because-
Let's take a step back and just-
Were we gonna look at those evaluations, because we didn't look at anyone else's?
Uh, to be honest, that's just one thing we've never seen, we don't see the, and that probably isn't right either, but the police evaluation.
I have them, I just don't look at them, they're not, they're not for me to look at. I don't look at other people's, I don't look at personnel files unless I have to get in them. That's, that's my thing, I don't, I have no reason to be in anybody's personnel file unless they request to be in there, and they ask for something out of it. Otherwise, I don't look through their personnel files. I have no reason to. So what's on their evaluation, I don't know. That's not my, that's not from my knowledge.
I'm just saying, the last time that, I mean, it wasn't put on the agenda, we were told, because that wasn't, they weren't turned over or something, it wasn't that, right, so it is now.
We just now found that out, so, I mean.
And I understand you got problems with the current, with some issues with police department, you know, with, um, certain things not being handled the way we want them to be handled. My question to you is, how does that affect me? Like I said, we each have individual cases, we are each individual officers, okay? Our door is always open. If you have questions, we will tell you what we can tell you.
And this is the first time we got the proposed, I mean, your guys'-
No, they were in with everybody else's.
Well, in the budget.
No, they were in with everybody else's.
Yeah.
Back in August.
Right, but we had postponed that, because we didn't have those evaluations.
In October, they were in the package, just like everybody else's.
But it was never on the agenda.
Yes, it was, employee wages all across the board.
So why was this, why didn't we do that then?
We had-
Why didn't we do that, that neither of you?
Mike didn't make a recommendation, but you guys went three percent, so I don't know why a recommendation was needed for a wage.
I only do the recommendations, as I always do, for the staff, except for the police, I don't do recommendations for the police.
You guys could've done a three percent raise and been done with it. He gives you a recommendation, but you can do what you want with a raise.
But you just missed everything I said, for the reason we did not do it.
I understand that, but, I mean, it was there for you guys to do.
Do I get a raise when I work, if I do a bad job? No, I get fired. I'm out of there.
So tell me how I did a bad job.
No, I didn't, Tyler, I'm not saying that.
That's why I'm asking you, to answer me, what am I to do?
All these things going on, that still went on, and are probably still going on.
You understand the hierarchy of military and police are very similar, correct?
I do.
You understand the hierarchy of that.
But I also know people can step up too. That, I do know that.
And butt into somebody else's case?
No. Just take care of things. And I don't know, I don't know what the answer is.
I don't either, that's what I'm asking you, because you're the one that determines whether or not we get raises, and I'm just-
I mean, we can certainly look at you and Jerry.
I would appreciate if you would separate Jerry and I from the generalization of the police department. Yes, we are officers of the three-man police department, but we are separate people.
Yeah, no, and I, you, you, I mean, you just said you took care of a dog problem, took it to the pound, I just, I appreciate that, and I do.
I don't, that, that's not at all the first time, Bob.
I know it isn't, I know it isn't.
Oh, that was a night too, I shouldn't, well, he called me, 'cause I-
I was with you another time when you did it.
Yeah?
I mean, I know you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not down, I'm not down with you.
I am asking you guys to treat Jerry and I and Bruce fairly, as individual officers of the Plainview Police Department.
I hear you, that's fair enough.
Your frustration with me is the generalization of the police department.
Good, I hear you.
He knew I wanted to see the vet clinic in Pearson, it was what, ten o'clock at night, and he called me and said, hey, I got a dog in my backseat, and he'd come around. I picked it up, we went to Pearson, he showed me how I logged the dog and everything.
At one time, we had four dogs. We had four of their kennels filled with dogs from Plainview.
And I was impressed how clean it was, you couldn't smell nothing, I'm like, this is a vet clinic, you know, he opened the door, and I was like. But anyway, Troy and Jerry, do you have any more to say?
No. Pretty much said it.
Is everybody finished per sitting?
Have you guys been aware of the concerns of the city council?
Absolutely, Julie, we are too.
Could you not take it upon yourself to try to work, I, maybe it wasn't your case, but to try to find more of the vehicles that weren't licensed? Did you take it upon yourself to go and talk to the people with dogs, that people have had issues with?
I have made a list of unlicensed vehicles in the past, yes.
Since, in the last few months?
We're talking, I've been talking about the dog, okay? I wrote, we were talking about the two or three dog tickets, that third one, didn't know whose that was, I wrote that ticket, 'cause the dog chased the neighbor's cat up the tree. So I wrote him the ticket for a dog at large, and this person is sort of poverty-stricken, really bad, and I'm not talking about the case where it worked, it's something else. I told them, like, well, you're gonna get a ticket, it's fifty dollars, fine. And they just moved it out, so when you have your dog license, you gotta get that dog, I had one dog. They made a phone call, that dog was gone that night. They got it out of town, 'cause they heard rumors that if their dog attacks another animal or person, then you gotta get rid of them. They got rid of that dog that night. They took it out to a family's farm in two counties away, but.
It shouldn't matter whether it's-
Alright, thanks, Jer, okay.
Yeah.
A question to the city employees, have you spoke your piece, or do you have anything else to say?
My guess.
Oh, I know, I'm, I was saving you for last.
I was kidding, just doing the important thing.
I know, I know, I was looking, I haven't forgotten about you. City employ, okay. Okay, would you like to do your report, and, or at the same time or separate?
Sort of together.
Sort of together, okay.
And I promise to be cool, calm, and collected, because I do have some things that, and, and it goes all the way around. First thing I want to make very clear to the council and to, um, the police, and drop that with Jerry and Tyler. Jerry and Tyler in particular, do you have any problems with me, have I, have I treated you any differently than every staff employee when you come in? Are you welcome, or you're not welcome in the city office?
I feel welcome.
Do you feel intimidated at all, or bullied? Yeah. Do you feel intimidated or bullied by Mike?
I'm sorry, Mike.
Just because I wear a Santa Claus suit?
Just checking.
Okay, the reason I bring it up in that is because, for whatever reason, and I know social media for what it is, the problem we're having in bringing this grievance up, we have a staff who feels like it's us versus them. And it's not fair to the staff that we have, that we have to be in this, uh, uh, social media, and people that like the social media saying, well, it's either the police or the city staff, and it's brought, not city, city staff, and it is not an us versus them. And, you know, the second thing I'm doing, Pam, I feel very bad, what did I ever do to Bruce? He stopped talking in August when the litigation came through, and let's make no bones about it, I'm not trying to make this a big thing, but quit calling it a claim! It's gone all over town, this is a court case, this is litigation, it is against the city of Plainview. And I won't say anything more about that, but understand, Bruce has said this, Curtis has said this.
Yeah, we really shouldn't discuss that here.
Alright, we'll keep that down, so the second part of it is, and now it goes back to the council in general, and this goes back to the mayor, and it's something that we've talked about in the staff meeting. We would appreciate a couple different things. Let us do our job. And that's all I'm asking, and I'm not gonna get emotional, and I, I don't very seldom get emotional. But I've been doing this for eleven years. I feel very highly qualified as a city administrator, and just because somebody has a bug in your ear that says they don't like the city administrator, because he's a mean boy, and that he's done some bad things on paving, I've done what I've been asked to do for eleven years, every step of the way. It's a matter of trust. And you have to have trust in the staff you do, you don't have to go around finding out all these, there's two sides to every story. You need to have trust in the employees that you have. And I have trust in the police department, I have trust in Courtney, I have trust in Kurt, we talk every single day, I have never bullied them. I rely on them, my management style is one that sits there and considers input. He comes into my office, we work on things, I sit there and blow things by, Courtney's the one that usually is keeping me calm. Since August, this has not been exactly pleasant for me, and I, and I want to say that, I don't know why, it's almost like a role reversal. Let's go ahead and, let's do what we can to protect the, um, individual police that's in mention, and let's go after the, um, um, city administrator. That's not fair. I got accused, and I got told of some things this last week, that, that nobody should ever even have to have somebody whom they trust as a friend and everybody, everything else, going around asking questions. It's not fair to Melissa, it's not fair to Courtney, it's not fair to the police officers. Not at all, and it all has to do with trust. We have two articles that say the one thing you need to have between the staff, the council, is trust. Between the mayor, and especially in what they call a strong, weak mayor system, okay? You need to have trust and let the people do their job. I do the job of administration, and we do things in there, we make decisions. Now, all of a sudden, there's individuals that come crying to you, you may ask, but it's not like you're gonna fix anything, whether it be something that has to do with billing, if it has to do with paving, it has to do with the jobs that you entrusted the city employees to do. You don't ask the questions of him how to fix a water. I don't ask that question. He may come in and say, hey, I need to call somebody. We've got jobs to do, we've been dealing with FEMA cases, we've been dealing with everything else. I'm extending the olive branch, especially to the mayor. Brian, I want you to be the best mayor you can be, but you can't do it trying to fix everybody's problem in town. You can only do your job if you sit there and trust the people that you have with you, you'll drive yourself crazy. If you've got people out there that are threatening that you need to get rid of, or plan B, you need to get rid of all these different people, but yet we're gonna sit there and go in protection, you're not doing yourself any favor. Not one bit. And the only thing I'm gonna say, Bruce, I'm gonna say it because it's a deal, I'm gonna make it very clear, on open record or not, any place, I've been in management for thirty-five years, any place I've ever worked that ever sued the employer, went the next day and found out that he wasn't no longer welcome there. And I have several questions on that too, and I don't get it, I don't understand it as an administrator, so that is one of some of the frustration.
Cannot help in a working company.
I understand.
We all understand that.
I do understand, there's a protected class, and we talk about it quite a bit in daily meetings. That is one of the things I wanted to talk about, and I wanna make sure that it's very well-understood, you've got a good staff. I do support these two individuals. I can't, Bob, I mean, we've been talking about a lot of things, I can't lump them in with the issues that we have to take care of. That's a council decision, but I do firmly believe that each one of these officers deserves at least a three percent raise. I really do. I've watched what they've had to do and pick up the slack. It needs to be said, and it needs to be done. That's what tonight was all about. You know, and yes, I'm getting persecuted, and yes, I have to divorce some individuals, and I don't know why. I don't know why. Where did this ever come from? What have I ever done to betray the trust of this city? Individuals may not like my decisions, but guess what? I'm not paying to always be liked. There's gonna be decisions that are made, that somebody's gonna have to come out on the short end of the stick, and I'll be glad to answer any questions from anyone. The problem in this, the other thing, Brian, I'm gonna ask you nicely, as the city administrator, I didn't want this necessarily public, this is one of the reasons, I'm not necessarily saying it had to be executive session. Say whatever you want, as Brian Schloty, be careful on the mayor page. If you wanna be the mayor of Plainview, you sit there and go out, then don't sit there and always put things out there that you can't take back. You took us off, and we tried to correct you one time. I don't wanna correct you.
Maybe just not get onto social media, maybe just don't do the social media, that might save you.
Let me back into that for a minute, I was trying to find a convenient time to interrupt, and this is kind of it. I've heard a half a dozen times tonight that the social media, or the comments in the social media are a problem. And that gives everyone who wants to hide in the shadows and make nasty remarks a venue to do that. Instead of showing up, coming to talk to somebody. I have refused for the last six months to even look at Facebook, I have erased it off all my devices, I think it's rotten to the core. But, does the city still maintain a Facebook page?
The city has had a Facebook page too, uh, and it's been, I'll tell you what, Bruce, before you, I, I'm gonna defend it. We have put stuff on there about hometown holidays and everything else.
Snow removal over again.
And it's addictive, and it's lovely, and it stabs you in the back every time you turn.
It gets a chance, yes, I know. It gets a chance. Yes, I know.
And Susan knows the drill from Pierce County. When somebody that has access to your Facebook page goes rogue and causes you grief. It can cause you a lot of grief. I, I really question the advisability of the city or the mayor dealing with public issues on Facebook. I mean, that's a policy discussion for the future. But it is a place that is way more damaging than good in a lot of senses. You can distribute information without Facebook. A few years ago, it actually happened without Facebook.
It really.
Tyler had something.
I'd love to add to you, Bruce. I believe Mike does a very good job with the city of Plainview's Facebook. I really feel, I, I mean, he gives updates, you know, it gives people something to share. Um, let's take snow removal, for instance. That spreads like wildfire. Good things on Facebook can spread like wildfire also. Uh, I, I, I firmly believe Mike does a very good job with, uh, the city of Plainview's Facebook page. You know, Courtney shares it, Melissa shares it. I see that all the time. That helps in the long run. A lot of people get to see that type of stuff. Should it be common knowledge, snows coming, get your car off the street? Absolutely. Is it? Not always. That does make our job easier when people can see things out in public. I understand your hesitation and be careful with Facebook type thing. Absolutely.
We just had a council lady go through the mud with this Facebook stuff. And that was awful, the stuff that was put on there about Julie. I was mortified.
My screenshot sent to me.
I was actually, uh-
And, you know, some of these people on the city council liked him.
I was gonna say, I was more mortified about the people that liked it.
It's hard being up here. It's hard looking at people's faces. Especially when they sign documents to get me off, but yet they talk to me like I'm their best friend. You know, just, don't be two-faced. Just stay off the Facebook.
I'm gonna finish this off just by saying, making sure to help. I, you know, and I, and Brian, I don't know what to say. I feel like I'm in fear for my job and I never knew this fear to be there as of August. And I don't know why. I mean, it's like one of those things that caught me out of the blue. I was asked to do my job and guess what? In August, I started doing my job and since then, it's been hell. And it doesn't need to be that way. I gotta go into Christmas and that. And you and I were supposed to be, and we are, I hope, friends. And you're the mayor. My job is to sit there and protect you from not making mistakes. And that's what I told you in the meeting. But certainly there are people out there that have talked to you and sit there, and I understand. You and I had a conversation that was very hard and I heartfelt and I, I appreciated about what you're going through and the pressure that some people have on you. My advice to that is I gotta deal with it every day too. Go ahead and just ignore it. The vocal minority is not there. If the vocal majority, if this council and the majority of the people wish to see me gone, um, so be it. And I understand. I understand that all too clearly. I mean, I operate in a larger world with city administrators too, and I know how they've, they, they talk about it. We talk about this thing. But I'm not ready. I have things to do. I have more people to upset. Including on paving and everything else. But you know what? That's gonna happen. But I'd like to do it with you. Okay? And that's all I've got to say. And I said, I really back this staff one hundred percent. And not in one, in one iota, no matter what you were told by individuals, and I know who told you. But the thing is, I support them one hundred percent. I did not like the way the raises were handled because of the recommendation. They had to hear their grievances. Please understand, I'm letting it be. No, but they wanted to have something to say and I hope they got it out. And I do support coming out now that you really consider Tyler and Jerry individually. Because when I've had them, they had to take over some really crap things and that, when I said, Tyler, will you do this for me? Boom. Tonight, you didn't even notice. Tyler did something for me that I will never forget.
I noticed.
It needed to be done because that's another one I don't want anything more to do with. I think it's poison. I think it's cancer.
The final item on the agenda tonight, number eleven, discussion, action, employee wages for police personnel. You see the recommendation of Mr. Holden? Any discussion? You will go one by one, not lump them all?
I'd make a recommendation to give both Jerry and-
Just do you wanna, if that's all right?
To give Jerry a three percent raise.
One second. Any discussion? Motion been made in second to give Gerald Newman a three percent raise. Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to give Tyler three percent raise.
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Uh, Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Is that retroactive then to like when the other employees got their wages? I'll keep on your motion.
I think it should be.
Yeah, do it.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Give Courtney something for the record if you wanna-
Oh, I would make a motion to make Jerry and Tyler's three percent wage increase as effective as when the other employees.
October first.
October first. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Is the question, you can raise, uh, wages anytime or is it only during budget time?
Anytime.
Anytime.
We have the option of considering-
Yes. The, yes, yes.
Whatever happened to the, what used to be in the paper, like how many calls these officers make? You know, like how many dog calls or how many?
That was asked.
I don't know.
I believe that's up to the police chief and you would not turn that over to the media.
I think he's turned it to the news office and they haven't printed it either too.
In the podcasts.
I think he's turned it to the news office a few times and it looked like it printed.
He has a few times, is from what I've talked with Brooke, uh, back when the council requested, and that was probably last year sometime. Um, we did it a couple times and then not for a long time. I think he has turned in a few stories recently.
Okay.
So when you do your spreadsheets, do you individ, get individual credit on what you do on your spreadsheets?
No.
I don't do the spreadsheets, to be completely, I don't do the spreadsheets. This is what the Plainview Police Department has done year to date.
So you're lumped together?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's the problem. You said what to do, I put individual spreadsheets.
Okay. Any discussion on Bruce Yelson for a wage increase?
None for me.
None for me as well.
Motion to adjourn?
I submit. Shall we do some comments? Bert, Brian, I'm-
Oh, you want more comments? Sorry. No, 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 you're right, you're right, you're right.
I just, I mean-
Go ahead.
With all respect to you guys, we, we're listening to you. All of us are. Appreciate that. On what kind of Mike said, I mean, Brian, are you thinking about doing something with Mike or what? I, I guess you're just hearing a lot from-
I hear things from people, so we finally had a nice, I thought, a good discussion the other day.
I, I don't think it was bad. It was a good discussion. No, I'm just saying, I still fear because I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure. And it's a trust issue and I'm willing to reach out. I'm willing to extend-
I know you don't like the word, but I still feel like, I'm not saying I don't trust the employees. I just like to hear from their mouth so that I can quash the rumors if that's, makes better sense to you.
It might. I just didn't like some of the things that were said. I mean, it, it was okay and I'm glad it's done and over with, but trust me, the staff comes to me and we all have these conversations because it's an open book.
Right.
But I thought they were kinda pointed, especially trying to find out in particular about an incident. And you're trying to find out, was it handled well? There's a trust issue. There's a trust problem there when I have, I, I laid out my everything to you in the last council meeting on what happened down on South King.
Right.
I clearly told you what I did wrong. I'm not saying I didn't do some things wrong. But I guarantee you, it hasn't quit and I've got Troy as a witness. I said hi to the guy, what was it, two days ago, and I won't wanna tell you what came out of his mouth. Was it a week ago?
Okay.
So I mean, as a mayor, you think they're doing their jobs?
Yes, absolutely.
Don't got no problem with Mike's job or nothing like that?
Not right now, no.
Have you in the past?
Have you made threats to him about him not having a job?
I've made threats.
That was heard, you know, Brian. I'll just say it, we heard that, that you said, I can fire you right now.
I don't think-
And you as a mayor have a lot of power. Hopefully you won't abuse it. You have, conversation's a two-way stream.
Right.
You have to listen as well as talk.
I didn't hear that either, so I don't know where she hit that.
Well, it was not social media because I don't get on the special page.
I've heard that as well, which is very disheartening.
Mike is saying that. I wanna know if you have a problem with Bruce and what he does for his job.
I just not a problem, well, I don't know where this whole lawsuit came from, I'm sorry, because I didn't- if something happened so long ago, I don't understand where it's coming from, I guess. And they said there's no record of him, you know. Like in my job, if something happens, you fill out an incident report right away so that if something does happen ten months later and you say, oh yeah, I reported that I fell on ice, so I don't know where it's coming from.
As far as job ice?
Yes, there's reports that he doesn't patrol as much, but there's also, I understand he has more paperwork to do.
Okay, this is not an agenda item.
But this is not an, yes. So.
And I make motion to adjourn.
Well, do you have more council comments, sorry?
I'm good for that.
Do you have any more, Tom? Motion to adjourn, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye?